All right, let's go ahead and call this regular city council meeting session to order at 6:10. Um, okay, let's go ahead and do roll call. Counselor Gerhardt, Counselor Braverman.
Here.
Uh, Counselor Tysoe.
Here.
Counselor Hartman.
Here.
Counselor Diddy.
Here.
And Mayor Kazmicki, here. Um, at this time, if you're able, please. And the blood of allegiance. Um, before we get going on our next agenda item, I would like to make a motion to amend our agenda and add a vote to allow Ashley Driscoll BEH to remain here for the meeting since it's not technically part of the agreement.
Second motion. Do you need me to make a motion? I'll make a motion to have Ashley Driscoll attend our meeting.
A second.
I made a motion to amend the agenda to add it.
Yes, first.
Okay.
And so that's second. So just to add it to the agenda to discuss. Okay, all in favor, raise your hand. Yeah, okay. Um, I just wanted Ashley to be able to stay and help as legal counsel while we go through our business today. So there is a part on here where I want to talk about the BEH contract. And I'd be helpful to have her here as well for that. Um, at this point, I guess I'll make a motion to just have her stay at the meeting.
Seconded. Okay. Uh, all in favor, raise your hand.
All opposed. All right, motion passes six zero. Thank you, Ashley, first. Um, the other thing that we can discuss just kind of with that, do we want both Ashley and Ed to remain here for today?
Yes.
Okay.
Uh, no, I don't think we need them both. Um, I don't see a reason to keep Ed here.
Well, I do.
I think we need him for continuity or information.
Yeah, he's got a lot of experience with us so far, and I think he'd be a good head.
All right. So I'd like both of you to remain, please. Thank you. Okay, uh, let's go ahead and move along. Um, we did reorder the agenda a little bit tonight, added our reports to the top because, as you know, our last few meetings have been very long and we'd either just push them off to the next meeting or give in very quick reports. So, um, oh wait, sorry, we're not doing reports. We're doing a vote for council president. Right up. So, um, Benny Galton resigned on July 10th, and he was our council president. We do need to vote now amongst the six of us for a new council president, um, for, you know, such cases that I may not be here or may need to reach myself. So at this point, we can go ahead and nominate for that.
I nominate Justice Braverman for president.
Okay, I'll second that. Do we want to have a discussion?
Well, I'll just add that I think it's important to have somebody who understands the parliamentary rules to take over as president when you're not around, Rachel. Um, we've already seen what happens if somebody's acting as president. They don't really know the rules. It's easy for the council meetings to get out of control. Um, so I think that that's a big job that I can bring to the table. But I wouldn't be, I'm sure you're going to be handling most of the things, Mayor, so I don't think the president will have to do too much.
Any other discussion? Right, let's call for a vote. Um, I will do roll call style. Counselor Diddy.
Yes.
Uh, Counselor Hartman.
No.
Counselor Gerhardt.
Yes.
Counselor Tysoe.
No.
Okay, Counselor Braverman.
Yes.
And Mayor Kazmicki, I will say yes as well. Looks like motion passes four to two. Um, would you like to, um, I bet usually some ears what I've been told.
Okay, how about if I take it the next time?
You would like to stay? I don't care.
No, 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 but let's, let's just keep it going and we'll change next time. I'm sorry. I like sending this to GM.
Our next item on our agenda is Police Chief's report.
It's rather short, seven ten, drinking from a fire hose here in last week. Um, we're trying to get business going. Uh, some of the citizens will see that there are three speed signs out, that's most we've ever had, uh, within the city. Uh, there's one that's a data collector, uh, two that are not, they're just kind of, you know, so Royal Parkway, Prince Albert, currently one on King George. King George is the data collector that's, uh, I've got about almost 4,000 cars now. I've kind of left that one up an extra long amount of time. And we'll have that data, uh, we'll try to get that data out online, or cars and the speeds and stuff, and the average speed is what it works out to. Um, and the only other thing really is coming up August 5th, it's National Night Out. And there's always seems to be a decent turnout for the community, all the different areas. And so if somebody wants to also come by and stop and visit, we'd love to do that. So it's just notify them. That's what usually we just kind of drive around and find it. And so, but if somebody wants us to know ahead of the time, we'd be more than happy to come by and visit and answer questions as they seem fit to ask. And that's all I got for today.
Uh, Chief, would you mind giving us an update on what's going on with the union negotiations? Would you have a minute to just tell the council what the, what the status is?
Um, sorry, before you answer that, I'm going to go ahead and recuse myself of that and switch to you.
So Chief, if you could just give a very brief overview.
Okay, so to my knowledge, the CBA, it went into mediation and then it went to arbitrator. Now, I, I know some information had to be sent in, I believe it was last Monday, I thought we could go Monday, to arbitration. Now, to my knowledge, and Ed can correct me, I think we can pull that back from arbitration, back to mediation. And so, that's where I think we're kind of headed. I would love to be, I've not been involved. I've been kind of mistaken out of the equation. And so I would like to, at this point, with everything that's going on, if it has to be after August 8th, um, would like to be involved in the process of trying to get this contract negotiated and over because we, we're at 13 months without of contract. And so, it's something that I think we can get done rather quickly and something to where we can get mutually agreed upon and where we can bring it to the council for a vote.
What do you, what do you feel has been the impasse in getting this resolved in 13 months? Like, I, I've never heard of a contract going on, or negotiations going on for 13 months.
I, I think there's just, well, we haven't been 13 months. I can, I can tell you that. It was, it was, it's been significantly less. It's been less than a year. You know, I want to say probably eight. Yeah, September was the first time that, you know, we had any negotiation. So it's been out not that long, but obviously we're out of contract. And so, yeah, I think there's just some impasse stuff that with, you know, previous administration and with what it was looking for. I think that we can come to an agreement pretty quick.
Do you think we can avoid the cost of going to arbitration, or are we going to have to do that?
That'll be something that's outside, you know, maybe something Ed can answer.
The arbitration costs by the hour, and if they're pulling it back to mediation, which is generally allowed if both sides are willing, that would just incur the cost of the mediator, uh, which doesn't require, as you know, all of the rules, the evidence does not, you know, prepare and submit it. It's much more informal. So, yes, that should be possible, uh, if the, uh, the other side is somewhat prepared to agree to that.
Now, Ashley, isn't this your area of expertise?
Yes.
Would this be something that the council could approve you to step in and help us get this resolved without extra cost and time? Because I feel, as I mentioned at the last meeting, um, and I don't know what my council members feel, but I really think that the people who are working behind the scenes here at King City deserve to be paid. They have been waiting 13 months, and I'd really like to see all of us get behind getting this resolved expediently.
Well, I can answer some of your process questions. So my understanding of where you guys are in the process is that under PEC by you have to negotiate for at least 150 days. Oftentimes contracts take significantly longer than that. It's, it is, an 18-month process is long, but not unheard of. Um, so your mandatory 150 days, at the end of 150 days, either party can unilaterally ask for mediation by the state mediator. It's actually like $300. It's not significantly expensive. Um, and then you have to mediate for a minimum of 15 days. And then at the end of mediation, which I believe where you are in the process, if you're unable to reach an agreement, you file for impasse. And, you know, because I was just looking for one of my clients on the, um, Employment Relations Board, or Bargain Employment Relations Board's website, you have both what we call your final offers posted, and it's a process designed to bring you forward. And I did not look at the substance of your proposals. I, I don't understand what those issues are. But bargaining continues during this process, and you can't reach an deal, then you go to an interest arbitrator. The interest arbitration can be expensive. You share the cost of the interest arbitrator, you share the cost of your representation. This is not something that I have the capacity to take on. But if you are looking for somebody, there are a lot of great practitioners that specifically do this.
And they do have one.
Okay.
That Mike would came, um, was, I'm calling our lead.
Oh.
Is, is who is working for the city. And so that's, uh, we're wrapped up. I haven't spoken to him. And so it's one of those things that, you know, obviously, waiting for, you know, just to be able to say, you know, Chief, because I've actually done these contracts without attorneys involved. And so, it's something that, you know, I've been exposed to before, something I can do.
So we could, we could, we could, the council could probably, at the next meeting, if we put it on the agenda, we could possibly authorize you.
Settle to help out.
And out of Colliers, you're in great hands.
That's what I'm saying. So that's not, I'm just trying to save the city money and also, um, see if we can move quicker. It's just.
Time and money is what I'm thinking about. I'd like to see the employees.
I'm, I want to retain our good employees. I really appreciate that we have both the chief, the lieutenant sergeant here today. Um, I really appreciate all the workers that work on behalf of the city behind the scenes. I'm sure they would appreciate having a, um, like the increase in their salary that they've been waiting for, for over a year. Um, it makes me really sad, profoundly sad, that for whatever reasons that I don't quite understand, that that hasn't been a number one priority of the city to take care of our internal customers, which are our workers.
So it looks like we have the Collier agreement to be discussed and voted on later this meeting.
Right, but if we can avoid the cost of that, it would be a great savings to the city copper.
So what do you think, wild guess, are we talking about a month, two months? Mind you have this all wrapped up?
Honestly, it's, it's going to depend upon how quickly the, the union has come back. Uh, so it's really hard to predict. Things have been slow in the communications in the past. I haven't been involved, but I've spoken to the people who were, and it was profoundly slow in the past, so it's a little hard to know. And I have a pretty good relationship with, uh, their attorney. And so I think it's something that we could complete pretty quickly. And to where I, I mean, I don't want to set the bar a little too high, but, you know, I mean.
Go ahead, please.
I, I think it's something that, you know, where, honestly, I think I could present something about 30 days once they started. And I think it's something that, you know, especially involving the staff and knowing what we can afford, basically, and what the city has and what we can gather. Because we are hopefully, you know, apartment is, you know, my side of the house is underpaid, and it's something that, you know, we need to try to narrow the gap with, you know, other cities where, you know, I have to walk across the street with $30,000 more a year. And, you know, that's just starting. And so it's just something that, you know, we'd love to be able to offer what we can. And, and like, obviously, it's something that comes before you, but.
And isn't your goal to hire more so that you can be 24/7?
Yeah, and we're, we're really close to that right now. And stuff where it's, we're about 22 hours. Um, and it's usually Lieutenant and I are usually cranking them up around 4:00 AM and stuff and working our way into the city to try to cover those, the emergency calls that come out.
Well, from 4:00 to 6:00 in the morning, I can go out and do my deeds.
No, usually we're here, just, uh, I'll be floating in.
Hey.
We have an opportunity here, I think. And so I, I, I'd love the opportunity to be able to do it and just complete it and be done with it. And we can move on. But that's what we're going to have to do in another year.
Well, Chief, I really want to thank you and Lieutenant Sergeant, and really, I'm hoping that you will work with the city council to let all the employees know that at least from our side of the street, we would like to retain our top talent. We want the employees to know that we appreciate them. We want them to know that we support them, that we want to help them get these matters resolved expediently and cost effectively. And if you could convey that, I think that would make.
I feel better. Thank you so much, Chief.
Listen to the mayor's report. Max, did you have anything you wanted to share?
I'm not the city manager, but.
I know, but just in, you know, city business.
Um, you may want to add potentially like a staff report generally moving forward in the interim.
Sure, idea. Thank you.
So the Kensington Square, as you guys know, um, was approved. They have, are beginning to submit for demolition permits. The local weapons inventory is moving along with our consultants for the rest of the UGB area. So basically, I've been talking with the Department of State Lands and our consultant. They're kind of going back and forth, but they've sent a couple rounds of revisions. And so we're hoping to have that completely finalized and officially adopted to the comp plan, hopefully within the next month or so. Um, other than that, I went to a resident's house yesterday and looked at her fence, and there is a tree permit, uh, and that's pretty much it.
Okay.
Can I, maybe the time you touch on it is, well, we're boarding the contract. Am I correct?
We are later, yes.
Okay, it might be better for me to speak about that then.
Okay.
So I'll, I'll.
Oh, thank you.
Sounds good. Uh, mayors and councilors' reports. Um, Counselor Diddy, do you have any reports you would like?
Nope.
Right. Uh, Counselor Gerhardt?
Well, as a matter of fact, I do. I have a number of, we need to start meeting more often. As long as the time.
Yeah.
Um, so I've attended two planning commission meetings. And every time I go to those meetings, I'm very impressed, I'll see correction here today, I'm impressed with how well she manages a meeting. They're, uh, they're, uh, very concise, and she listens to everybody's opinion. And it's, I really appreciate that. Um, I also attended an emergency session via Zoom on Friday, the 20th. In an effort to make sure we get out of here at 9:00 o'clock, I'm going to review some of my reports. Um, I attended the city charter committee. Um, and that, I'm, I'm kind of impressed with those people, too. There's a lot of effort, a lot of people that are really scratching their brains to come up with some ideas to, to refine the city charter. Um, I, I, I hope we continue allowing them to do that in, in some, in some way or form. I also attended a small group, uh, committee, um, that resulted from the New Home Company and MLG. And there'll be a presentation to the city council, hopefully in August. I can get that on the agenda. And I, yesterday, we attended the planning commission meeting. I think it was yesterday.
That's fair.
Yeah, yeah. Um, and they're going to have a work session on August 27th to 10:00 AM. And I, I really recommend everybody else on the city council, try to attend that meeting, uh, maybe Zoom. Uh, but there's so much that goes on, so much details, so much stuff in the, they're dealing with, that we need to be informed, uh, because we're going to be voting on their decisions. So, so I think it's critically important that city council. That's it.
Thank you. Counselor Braverman?
I do. I have a few things I would like to share, Mayor, if that's okay. I'll try to be brief. Um, before I forget, though, I just wanted to say I did attend the parade for July 4th. I did walk, um, with some of my colleagues, um, on the Fourth of July parade, and I thought it was very well done. I would just make a recommendation before I forget, that there be more porta potties along the route. They were all in the, at the end, but people were complaining to me that they had to go to the restroom while they were, because we do line up a whole hour before the parade. And there is a restroom there where you're, you know, at the center. But once you start walking, if you have to go to the restroom, there's no porta potties along the way. And I, I guess I misunderstood. I thought the city council voted to add that in, but I didn't see any. So I would just make a recommendation before I forget, because I will forget, um, for next year that we consider. Um, I think my report is mainly about the series of events of what's happened and what's led us here, and where I hope, um, the city council will be moving towards in the future. And I'd like to be positive and proactive. Um, but I just want to say that it's been really sad for me to be participating as a city council member here since January to present, and feel like this entire bench over here in the past has been very adversarial, I felt, towards, um, several of our city council members when we attempted mightily to make sure that our municipal code and our charter were followed properly, and that our city manager and staff were held accountable to proper ethics and, you know, making sure they were following the rules and following the protocols and Robert's rules. And I, I didn't feel that that happened from January to present. And it has led to a lot of negative publicity and erosion of trust that I think, um, our 5,000-plus residents have, of not only the city council, but of the city of King City. Um, I just feel that, um, we deserve better. Um, and I feel that as a city council member and all of us sitting here on the bench, have a duty to do what we are imposed to do in our charter, and that is to manage the city manager and to ensure that there is a check and balance system on all power. In other words, the city council should not have the power all the time. There should be a check and balance with our city manager, our city staff, um, and our council. But to have what appeared to have been council and city management and staff lined up against several of the city council members, including myself, for calling out things that we felt we were duty bound to call out, and to, and we were asking for information and records and accountings financially, um, that we were never given. And it became a real fight, and it became a very adversarial process. And when we asked for our neutral party to be brought in to help us, we did not get any help. Um, instead, um, we had a city manager file a notice of tort claim against several of our city, uh, counselors and many members of the public. And in my opinion, that eroded even further trust with the city, um, residents here, because many people have confided in me, my neighbors, that they're afraid to come to city council and voice any opinion, because then they'll be named in a tort claim. And I think that that is a real, I, I just think that's a travesty. It's a real travesty. And I don't know if you can see this pin that I'm wearing on my whip out today. It's a flag that my mother, I mean, she rests in peace, gave me before she passed away. My mom was first born here in the United States. Her parents were immigrants. Um, she was very proud of this country and felt that the benefit of living in the United States was that there was a democracy, a democracy of the people by the people, okay? That we didn't have a totalitarian and adversarial process where only one person or a slate of bureaucrats would dictate to the people what they could and couldn't do. And if they dared to speak up against the government and say they disagreed, they would be punished by being named in a tort claim. I know that my mother, if she was here today, she'd be in tears to see what King City has evolved into. And what I want to say is I'm excited for the future, and now that we have an open opportunity now to regroup and to, um, set a more structured infrastructure so that this will never happen again. We should never have one person, and it's nothing personal to want this person, it's just that there should never be anyone in a position of power that's unbridled and unchecked. Do you agree with me? There should never be any form of government in the United States where we are a republic and a democracy, where the people should be allowed, speak freely, they should be able to be critical of us, they can say what they want, they should be free to give feedback, they should be free to disagree, they should even be free to protest. And to have, um, that kind of infrastructure, it is going to require the city council to be brave enough to work on our municipal code, to finesse any ambiguity in the wording. It will be really looking at our charter. It'll be really looking at our contract language. And it will really take a firm commitment by the public to come out and speak on behalf of the people here of King City. Um, I ran on a platform that, um, for the people, by the people. I feel very strongly about that. I think many of you know that I have stood firm in, in supporting, uh, the people of King City and our surrounding area. And I really, um, so my report, Mayor, is that I am really hoping that we will unite King City, and we will bring, uh, some real brain power into really redoing our infrastructure as far as our wording in our municipal code, in our, um, in our charter. I am hoping that we will add something that says that we have more than a recall or a writ if people are unhappy with what's going on here. I think that those limited remedies are really not helpful in creating unity here in King City. I would like to see more remedies created that are not cost prohibitive for the public to tell us they don't like what we're doing and they want us to go in a different direction. I would like to see us, I don't think city council members should be paid. Um, I think that right now, until we grow to more than 5,000 people, um, it should stay a volunteer position, because I think money sometimes yields greed, and I'd like to avoid that here on city council. But I think, lastly, Mayor, I think it's time, I know we just hired a public information officer, Lieutenant told me, I think we should do a poll of all 5,000 of our residents and our surrounding area residents to give feedback on what they would like to see happening here in King City. I'm sure that there are people out there that feel that there are more important things to the residents besides acquiring land. There's, there are real needs that have gone unmet, that I'd like to see the citizens speak up and tell us and direct us as a democracy on what they would like to see us be doing. Um, and I also would like to see that, um, we really support our senior citizens that are the majority of the residents here, raising, um, bonds and taxes and fees and creating this town hall down the road that has a thousand steps that they'll never be able to walk up. It doesn't make any sense to me.
I'm sorry, you have one minute. Let me.
So I'm just hoping, Mayor, my report is that I'd really like to see us bond together, band together, get citizen input, and really move this ball in a much more positive direction, in a more democratic, uh, direction than I have seen since I've come on the bench. Thank you.
Do you want to have any?
Yes.
Well, obviously, I was just supporting the library.
Okay.
And our, our funny little car, one first. And our funny little car went first place, so that was fun.
Oh, nice.
The toast one?
What?
The toast?
Yeah.
The one with the toast? I took a picture for you.
Oh, good. I have it.
Wonderful. And I've been involved with the community development plot grant meetings, and the, what do you call it, Policy Advisory Board for Washington County, and everything is having to be done because of the dictates from Washington DC, and so we are walking on eggs right this minute, thinking of taking away people's abilities to speak. We're not allowed to talk about diversity, equity, and inclusion in any of the grant applications. So, you know, kind of the shoes are falling all over the place. So, but right this minute, that's really about all I have. I haven't had a chance to attend any of the MPEF meetings and some of the others. So, personal stuff.
Okay. My report, I'm going to try to keep it short. I think the key things that I want to talk about is that we do, our meetings do tend to run long. That is really, I think, unacceptable for us as council, and for you all as citizens to sit here for four hours, hoping that we'll talk about something that you didn't hear us talk about, and then we'll push it through the committee. So I would like to cap this meeting, and try to get through the items, you know, as quickly but thoroughly as we can, and then schedule a couple of special sessions before August, because we do have a lot we need to get to, and it's important that they are, again, accurate, so that you all know what we actually want to discuss. So, the first thing that I would like to do, we did post our council vacancy, and that went active on July 17th, which puts August 16th as the last day to submit. And then five days after that would be August 21st, would be the soonest day we could do interviews. August 20th is our regular session. I would like to recommend, if you all are in agreement, that we just move our regular session to Thursday the 21st, so that it alleviates an additional meeting, and we can just hold the interviews on that day.
I make a motion that we do that.
Okay. So if everyone wants to just go ahead and look real quick, and see if that is something that we can, that we can do, that way we can have, hold, my, my goal would be to hold two special sessions, to see how, and then, probably like a lunchtime session, so we can get through these pressing issues that we've had to hold off. But for August, I would like to move our special, our regular session to August 21st.
I make a motion that we move our regular meeting to August 21st at 6:00?
Yeah, same time, 6:00 o'clock.
I'll second that.
Okay. That way we can have another meeting just for interviews. So, is there any, we were anything about? Okay, let's go ahead and do roll call. Counselor Gearhart? Counselor Braverman?
Yes.
Okay, Counselor Ardidi?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. Counselor Hartman?
Yes.
Okay, Mayor Cazmer C, yes. Okay, so our passes, 6-0. Our next regular session will be August 21st at 6:00 p.m., so that we can include council interviews. So Ronnie, if we can get that updated too, for that interview day? Awesome. And then the other thing, I would like to schedule a couple of special sessions, I don't know if we need to do them both right now. We could do like Monday from 12 to 1, if that works for everybody.
This Monday?
This Monday, this 28th.
Do it.
And then lunchtime? I can even zoom in or call in.
Depends on the day. Just a reminder, I'm not here on Mondays.
Okay. Next week at all, what?
Tuesday? You can do Monday or Tuesday. Oh, July. She said next, oh, yeah.
Get one next week, and then next week we can add another one that works. It's a lunchtime, even if we all just zoom in, and we can work through some of these items. We did remove some items from last week, from tonight's meeting, so we do have, you know, additional items.
Do you want to do Tuesday and Wednesday, Mayor?
I cannot do Wednesday.
Tuesday, 12 to 1 you could do? Okay.
Tuesday?
29.
Tuesday, 29, 12 to 1. Vince, would you be able to attend next Tuesday?
No, I'm not available.
12 to 1?
Not available.
Okay. But it sounds like, okay, okay, but it sounds like we would have four, the five of us would be able to do that?
Yeah.
We need to vote on that, Ronnie, or can we, okay. I make a motion to add special session Tuesday, July 29th from 12 to 1.
I second.
Okay, all in favor, raise your hand, please. Okay, all opposed? Vince, how you vote? I mean, I know he's not going to be in attendance, but.
Yes, he voted yes.
All right. Passes 6-0, so we will add a special session next Tuesday from 12 to 1, and we'll get that agenda. Okay.
Mayor, don't forget, we still need to add Ronnie's audio, we've got to do a special session about that, too.
We'll do that as a special session.
Oh, we will? Okay, all right.
Okay, and so that is all for me. Oh, boy, I'm like. So, let's go ahead and move on to item number eight, city council minutes. We are approving our meeting minutes for May 21st, 2025, as well as June 18th, 2025. Let's start with May 21st. Does anybody see any, no issues? Okay, move to approve, May 21st, 2025 minutes.
I move that we approve.
Okay, I will second.
Jan.
Jan made a motion.
Let's vote.
Yeah, all in favor, raise your hand. One, two, three, four, five, six. A motion passes 6-0. The next one is our meeting minutes from June 18th. The one thing I wanted to add there, under where it says discussing hiring interim and permanent city manager, I would just like it shown in that recap that I did recuse myself from discussions related to contract negotiations. Outside of that, I didn't see anything. Did anybody else?
I didn't. I make a motion that we approve the June 18th minutes.
Yes, sir.
With corrections?
With those corrections that you made.
Second by Counselor Gearhart. All in favor, raise your hand. One, two, three, four, five, and Vince? All opposed? Oh, he's got it up, okay. Motion passes 6-0. Okay, we are now going to move on to open forum. Open forums intended to ensure that the community have an opportunity to provide input for items being considered on the agenda, or making suggestions for future agendas. We will limit our time tonight to three minutes, just to, you know, be a little more expeditious. I'm going to go ahead and start open forum. We did receive electronic communication. Received a public comment from Carrie Todd of King City, just requesting an electronic speed sign on 131st Avenue southbound between Beefend and Fisher, citing speeding concerns and pedestrian safety. Chief, did you want to speak to that public comment? You had something, the speed sign going southbound?
I could do a portable sign there. We talked about one of the permanent signs, but that requires a cement pad and engineering. So it, I guess it would depend on, you know, the direction that you want to go, if you want something that's there. Permanently, because it is, you know, obviously it's downhill, it's straight stretch, it's a school zone, nine months out of the year. So if it's, if it's that direction you want me to go, where it's a permanent sign, I guess I would need some direction and, you know, hold on some, get some engineering.
Some quotes or something on?
Yeah, because we have.
Absolutely.
An RFP, and where we can get there, and also, because Davis is out for the next six, eight weeks, and so it'd be something that we'd have to have an outside person come in and do that instead of, something we could do.
I can't overemphasize enough, Chief, how much it's needed. It, people are, I know you guys are doing what you can, but even on the weekends, I've seen so many pedestrians almost, people come flying down. They're doing 50, 60 miles an hour.
Counselor Braverman, we'll discuss it further.
Okay, yeah, I'm just saying.
Okay, the first we have here is Maureen Petrie.
Good evening.
Good evening.
So I'm here representing Gretchen, who was unable to attend the meeting tonight. She had a letter she'd like me to read to you. So, I'm speaking for Gretchen. Mayor and city councilors, I apologize for not being able to appear in person at the meeting this evening. I have a previous commitment I could not change. You have the appointment of a planning commissioner on your agenda this evening, and the chair of the planning commission, commission has one current vacancy. I have researched the rules for members of the planning commission around the metro area and statewide. General rule, the one non-resident of a planning commission is jurisdictional. That member is usually a business owner in the city, but doesn't live there. The King City Planning Commission currently has two non-resident members. I would advise the council to appoint a resident member to the vacant position, as that it was a resident member who resigned. Gretchen Lee Yurk, Gretchen Vayner.
Thanks.
Thank you, guys.
Okay, next we have Maureen McInnis.
I didn't find, was that the sign that was out there? No, somebody told me, oh, they just wanted to know who was at the meeting. However, oh, what's that, Jeff Dewan on there?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. All right, moving on.
Understanding my part.
No problem. Okay, so next we have Kathy English.
No, same thing.
Same, same thing, okay. So next we have Charles Dewitt. All right, well, I mean, there we go.
No, I got it really well. Good evening, thank you for hearing me, Mayor and councilors. Tonight I'm speaking to you for our direct neighbor, King City condominiums, and I've written you a letter. I'll read it into the record if you'd like. It's probably de tester, and less time wasted if you just put it in electronically with the magic of Ronnie. The gist of the letter is, we desperately need to take care of the drainage from the middle of Crown Drive. You can add this. I'm sorry about not getting the electronic stuff in. I seem to not be able to hit attach. But I've given you 40 some signatures, and all on this letter, with a map that shows where the drainage is coming off the hillside from Beefend, and impacting our property in a very costly and ongoing manner.
Can you show the pictures? Because, you know, they didn't come, I read your letter, and I asked Ronnie if he could get the attachments, but they weren't attached. I'm not, I'm not trying to embarrass you, I just wanted to see them.
Is this also related to the, what we're going to be voting on?
Yes.
Is that a remedy?
This is all water damage. This is all damage on the street. You can walk down Crown from 116th towards the curve where it comes in parallel to 99. And you can see a spout at 11510, southwest Crown Drive, where the water damage begins to undermine and erode the street. And it continues all the way around the corner, all the way up right to City Hall. And that water damage is reported from the open trail and that hillside there, and that is out of control.
Electric changes.
Actually, listen to the underground water, underground flow of water at 11520 on the Crown Drive corner of that building, there is two sump pumps in the ground. And if you put your ear on that barrel, you can hear the underground water today, when we've had no rain, no irrigation over there, you can hear the water. And just for your, there's the map, and the letter with the signatures, and I will send you the photos as an electric file.
Thank you. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, Anita Kino?
I'm listening.
Oh, okay. I love it. Go right to.
Could I hit that now? Home.
Uh, oh, yeah, okay. Andy Cunningham.
Thank you, Mayor, council. I see the council is being asked to appoint Jim Minor to the planning commission. Mr. Minor was the KCTA president a few years ago, he was reappointed in his tenure. In my humble opinion, he would not be a good choice for this position. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any online?
I have one. I have a new, Jenny Walker.
Jenny Walker?
Jenny Walker, yeah.
GW comment on works construction.
Okay.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Yes, we can. State your name before you begin. Thank you. Good evening, respected council members and treasured King City neighbors. My name is Jenny Walker, and I am a homeowner on southwest Crown Drive, one of the residents directly impacted by tonight's vote. I am a disabled senior living with heart failure and severe mobility limitations. Your vote tonight is not just about pavement or drainage, it's about protecting the safety, dignity, and property values that matter to everyone who calls this neighborhood home. The city's planned construction project directly threatens over 300 tall, mature arborvitae trees standing just feet from homes that face or back up to this green corridor. These trees have shielded us from traffic, pollution, noise, and direct views of Highway 99 for decades. Without them, we are left fully exposed to the views of Highway 99, which leaves us exposed to a harsh new reality, one that diminishes both our quality of life and the identity of our neighborhood. That loss is compounded by the absence of a clear plan to protect the most vulnerable among us, such as the disabled, the elderly, and the mobility-challenged residents during construction. So far, the city's only public statement refers to generic contractor language about driveway ramps, even though there are no driveways on this street. That's not a plan, that's an oversight, and it raises real concerns. This is a narrow street, and many of the arborvitae's lean into the curb. Bringing in a full-size paving equipment could damage both the trees and the machinery. Other cities have used manual edge finishing done by hand to protect mature vegetation. It's a reasonable and respectful alternative. I've also circulated a petition to gauge how neighbors felt. Many were supportive, but I want to be clear, I only speak for myself. Neither the city nor HOA has provided community-wide communications or called for a formal homeowner vote, despite the fact that this project directly affects our property, safety, and long-term assets. No individual and no board decision shall be allowed to substitute for a formal homeowner vote on a project of this scale and impact. This ongoing lack of communication from both the city and the HOA has led to confusion, frustration, and division among neighbors. Each of you on this council was elected by the people to serve the people. That includes residents like me who are directly affected by what you decide tonight. When impacted voices are overlooked, it raises larger questions about whose interests are being representative. I, represented, I respectfully ask.
Five seconds, Jenny.
Five, okay. I'm not trying to stop needed infrastructure. I ask that the city honor its commitment and transparency, accountability, and decisions that respect both the people and the land we live on. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Walker. All right. Anyone else online?
Yes, I have Melanie Sage Farris.
Okay. Melanie?
If you can hear us, unmute.
This is from Melanie Sage Farris, and I only want to say, Mr. Minor is not a team player, he will start, he will start all.
Thank you. Anyone else online? All right, we will go ahead and. All right, we will go ahead and close open forum and move on to unfinished business, first of which is Planning Commission appointments. Mr. Minor, if you would like to come up, we can go ahead and start with you. I am just asking questionable to you, just to kind of keep it simple. If you want to just tell us why you want to be on the Planning Commission and what expertise you bring to this commission, and if you would like to respond to any open forum comments here, people, it will be known as well.
Okay, very good. I lived in King City for, I think, about six, seven years, and I thought I would take my talents and give them... Or try to... And I thought I would take those talents and apply them to the Planning Committee. Because it's extremely important to work with the Planning Committee, because once you make a mistake, it takes a lot to recover from it. So that's why I thought I would join it. I've had experience in contract work and planning in previous HOA, as well as King City Association.
Follow-up questions by the Council?
I have Covel from Mike. How many Planning Commission meetings have you attended so far?
I think I've attended not...
I'm asking the same question of everybody's. Also, what do you say to those who say that the Planning Commission should only be consisting of people who live in King City, even potentially they may?
That's an interesting statement. Even though they plan... Are they within the boundary line to the new King City? I would say that would be a yes to that, because they're going to be there. The thing that bothers me more is, are they their own property rather than the community?
Yeah, yeah.
Are they thinking of King City? Or are they thinking of their own particular property and how it's going? That would be... The difference, because they come on that.
I think that's all. I think he answered my question. You have not attended one Planning Commission meeting?
No.
Okay, thank you. Any questions?
Thank you.
Okay, same question. Why do you want to be on the Planning Commission? What is important, and then please respond to any questions.
As many of you know, I was on the Planning Commission for a year, and I addressed that removal. Wrote a six-page response to my removal from the Planning Commission. I was... The hearing was for misconduct and unperformance of duty. And the Council at the time acknowledged the fact that none of that existed. It basically came down to a conflict of interest issue. So I received information from Ron Pearson, who was the Director of the OGC at that time. And also, I got advice from a land use attorney, who both said that I only had a potential conflict of interest. And as long as I declared a potential conflict, then there was no issue. I did not have a direct conflict, because the TSP and master planning documents were citywide and didn't focus on my particular property. So, Siri agrees with that. So, you know, if there, in the future, if I'm on the Planning Commission, if there is something that specifically affects my property or my family, family's property, then of course I would refuse myself from those discussions and not participate in those discussions. So when I was on the Planning Commission, like I said, I was on it for a year. It was pretty quiet at that time. I think I only attended three meetings during that time. And one was for the Habitat for Humanity Development that's going on down on whatever that road is, the stuff in 99W by the fire station. And there was a pipeline issue. I did my due diligence, I read everything, I got in my car, I went and looked at the site. I think that's really important, to go and view things and get a perspective in your mind of actually what people, you know, what people are talking about. City's going through explosive growth right now, so I think it's really important that we grow responsibly. I think there are sections of the TSP currently that are not so responsible. So I think that those are the types of things that I think that the Planning Commission needs to advocate for and speak up for. I think it's important for the Planning Commissioners to be prepared and do their due diligence and research things, and like I said, do site visits. My experience with the Planning Commission, previously, when I first was appointed, there was the recommendation to go and review the Oregon handbook for Planning Commissioners, which I went through and looked at. In fact, at one meeting, I held it up to the Planning Commissioners, and they knew, had seen it. So I think it's really important that we advocate for training through LOC or other entities to make sure that the Planning Commissioners are, you know, well-versed in procedures and policies, and that, you know, they understand the municipal code and the comprehensive plan, and they understand all those documents, because they're the ones that are basically enforcing and approving, you know, permits and make recommendations to Council based on those documents. And what was the other question?
I think if you wanted to ask your question.
Yeah, I think you already answered it, Mr. Meyer. How many Planning Commission meetings have you attended?
Well, most all in the last maybe five or six years. I think in the last few months, I haven't attended the last few. What I don't attend personally, I go back and watch on the recorded, on Zoom. So, most all of them.
So what do you say to the people who say that there should be representation only from the King City?
Well, I disagree with that. We're within the boundary of the UGB, and we're all being affected by the development that's going on, probably more so than any resident in King City, because they're removed from that activity, whether it be construction noise or traffic issues. I think we're all dealing with traffic issues right now, especially Beet Bend and Roy Rogers right now, where you can sit for 20 minutes. But, you know, there's two distinct communities in the Kinston Terrace area. There's Rivermead, and there's the 147th community. So, you know, my family's been there since 1880. My great-grandparents lived in King City. As a toddler, I was walking the streets of King City. So, you know, I very much feel a part of this community. I'm very engaged, as many of you well know, and take part in as much as I can. We go to the same shopping centers, we eat at the same restaurants. The only thing I don't do right now is pay taxes. So that's the difference between a resident and myself, is I don't pay city taxes. I was a little dismayed to see the signs for the Fourth of July Parade that said "Residents Only." And I'm hearing these grevelings that I'm not a resident. So, right now, your code allows for people that live within the urban growth boundary to be on the Planning Commission. And if that's something that you want to change, then we should maybe consider that for your Charter Committee to make that change. But, you know, I know the area very well, better than anybody in this room. I know the valleys, I know the river, I know the property owners. I'm very familiar with the topography. And once again, if you haven't seen it, then you don't really have an appreciation for it.
You've heard a question. I'm curious about the Fourth of July Parade. I should admit that, so...
Yeah, "Residents Only," I was a little shocked by that.
Online, all stuff online, so "Residents Only" and "Martyr's Parade."
And I saw a sign on Beet Bend Road. So, you know, I was a little disturbed by that, because I think that we should be a community that...
I can speak to the signs that were put up specifically for it, where it did not say that. And I can say as somebody who was part of that, that was never the intent. And watching, that's probably the biggest parade King City's ever had. There were thousands of people on the parade. So if you had got that, I apologize on behalf of the people I know who did that, my wife being one of them, that was never the intention.
Interesting, okay, yeah.
I remember it being on the line.
It's not.
And that's good, because, you know...
I would say, Teagan and my wife will tell you, that is not on their...
We want to be a community that welcomes and not restricts.
I was going to say, part of the reason I volunteered to be on the Fourth of July Committee was because I felt like we needed to be encompassing of the entire area.
Absolutely.
And do something that brought us together, rather than having people...
And that's my answer to the previous question, as far as the resident on the Planning Commission.
Can I just say thank you to Counselor Hartman and his wife and Teagan, and to Counselor Tysoe? I thought the parade was outstanding.
I thought it was the best parade we've ever had. And there's another person in this room that needs to be thanked, is Elaine Sims, who worked on this parade.
Thank you.
Yes, I didn't know.
Yeah, we go to the beach every year, so it isn't...
All right, thank you.
All right.
Okay, so I guess...
Can I make a motion? What do you want us to do, dear?
I'd like to nominate Mike Meyer for the Planning Commission.
I'd like to second that.
Seconded? Questions?
I would just like to say, I do appreciate, like, all the expertise you would bring to this position. You sound like you were very involved in a lot of the meetings. And so, very dedicated to the city. And you do take your time to research things, and I do appreciate that.
Heard of? Right, Counselor Tysoe.
I'm going to abstain, because I feel... Voting for either one of these gentlemen is going to contribute to some of the tensions that we have. And I'd like to support of that vote, for the group and the person.
Counselor Braverman?
I vote yes.
Counselor Arvidi?
I can't hear anything you're saying. I have no idea what you're asking.
There's been a motion and a second for appointing Mike Meyer to the Planning Commission.
And what about the other gentleman?
We're doing... There was just a motion for him at this point.
For who?
We're doing them individually.
A motion for who?
There was a motion for Mike Meyer.
A motion was for Mike.
It's been seconded, and we're doing a roll call. And so far, there's been at least one yes and one abstain.
Yeah, so, the motion is for appointing Mike Meyer to the Planning Commission.
And I don't understand what happened with the other gentleman who made a presentation. Where is he? Is he not being nominated, or what?
No, he's still here. We were just... There was a motion for one, and so we'll discuss the other one. So right now, the motion on the floor is just for Mike Meyer.
Okay, go ahead.
So do you vote yes or no?
Yes.
Okay. Counselor Gearhart?
Yes.
Counselor Hartman?
This is not personal, but you are a polarizing voice in this city, and I'm going to vote no.
Okay. And Mayor Kazmersky, I vote yes. So motion passes four to one to one. Thinking of Mr. Minor.
I just wanted to say thank you to James Minor for coming.
Okay, we have abstained.
Yes.
Gearhart, yes.
I just wanted to thank James Minor for coming, and hopefully, if there's more vacancies, we would consider you then. So thank you for making your presentation.
Would anyone like to make a motion to nominate? Oh, we already made one. Oh, I see.
It's done.
Moving on to council assignments. I want to make this quick, because we do have a vacancy that will... Thank you. We did, so as I...
All the highlights are the important ones.
Perfect. So here's what we're going to do for this month, because we can see and we'll have to reassign commission appointments, or, sorry, council assignments next month as well. So for now, since we do have an opening, and we're going to put Mr. Counselor Gearhart in place of a couple of these. So if it's just all the ones you highlighted, we're putting Counselor Gearhart?
Yeah, unless there's too much, and then, because we also have vacancies from Mayor Manilis.
Right. So the only question that I had was, should I be the one to put on the WCCC?
Yeah, technically.
Yes, yes.
So let's go ahead and do that. So I will become primary on the WCCC. And then, it looks like council president is alternate, so we can have Counselor Braverman for that.
Yeah, just so you know, those meetings, I believe...
And we will do my best.
If not, I think that's...
It looks like it's once a month, so, yeah. I mean, I know. I will do my best to attend those. And then, we do have for the Transportation Advisory Committee, we had Mike Weston and then Max Carter. So are you saying we should have Steve be primary? Or should we move Max up to primary? Or have Chief be primary?
What Transportation Advisory Committee does look a million...
Or the WCCC.
Oh, I haven't been to any of those meetings.
Yeah, I mean, you were the alternate, but Weston was our primary. So should we have Chief be primary, or you be primary, or, I don't know?
Well, Chief's on WACA.
I guess it would be me, unless Steve knows a lot about transportation. But I nominate you, Matt.
I second that.
Max up to primary, and we'll make Counselor Gearhart alternate. Okay. And then, we will have Counselor Gearhart be alternate for Small Cities Group and alternate for League of Oregon Cities. With Washington County Transportation Options, we did have primaries Weston and alternate as Braverman. Would you like to move to primary or stay as alternate? And Counselor Gearhart can be primary on that.
Let's see, this primary, I mean secondary.
Or would we like, or would we like Max to be primary on that, too?
What was that?
The Washington County Transportation Options.
I am in a lot of meetings all the time.
Yeah, okay.
I can do that one.
Yeah, okay. So we'll go ahead and put you as primary, and we'll leave Braverman as alternate. And then, Metro Council, that was Manilis on there. Is that one that I need to be on?
Really? Any of you can go there, because we can't do much there.
It's just showing up.
Yeah, showing up.
Do you mind if you have primary on that, and I'll be your alternate? Is that okay? All right. So we'll go ahead and move Counselor Hartman to primary, and then me as alternate. Thank you. We have the J-PAC. I'm still primary on that. We'll add Counselor Gearhart as alternate. And then, Counselor Gearhart, you get to go to all town hall meetings for congressional delegates when announced. Okay.
Technically, you all are invited to that.
There's one more.
There is the Homeowners Association, please on.
I want to be primary.
Okay, we'll move... So we'll move Braverman to primary on HOA, and Gearhart to alternate. And then, I'm now primary on Oregon Mayor's Association, and we will add Braverman to alternate.
Down here, there's one more.
Did you get enough of the things you just did? Anybody else?
Yes, it's recorded, so yes. Nope, taken. We're just getting through, right? We're doing it again.
I'm tired of it all, though. We're not allowed.
All right. Next up, erosion presentation.
Ron, you want to pull up that presentation? It's in the agenda. And while he's doing that, I can just start giving you the overview. So this is a presentation, it's kind of two-pronged. It's about the erosion, but it's also about the Forest Park Project that I've been keeping on the back burner, but I'm starting to pick up some steam on since I started. It has been identified at the King City Community Park for many years that there has been an erosion coming down from Deer Creek. So Deer Creek, basically, 20 years ago, when Edgewater was built, Clean Water Services needed to have a, like, a basin, a catch basin for their water, that came down off Full Mountain and will be exacerbated by Edgewater. So they built a wetlands there at the bottom of the park. So if you look at an overview map, Ronnie, if you could pull up the second page, you'll see that there is like a forested... you'll see that there is like a forested area below the actual field itself. Um, the wetland's in the middle of that. It's about, I think about a half a mile, quarter mile if you walk the whole thing. But if you go back there, there's trails that people have carved into the woods just because it's kind of a cool place to go hang out. But officially, the city does not maintain it. We don't have the resources to maintain it. And again, there's this erosion issue, two creek crossings that are not maintained. There's just wooden planks that cross the creeks. So we warn people not to go back there and we don't actively encourage folks to go back there. I've actually installed signs and a safety fence and there's some more work that needs to be done. Um, so this next picture here shows a flood going on in the erosion gully. So you can see a little waterfall. That waterfall is actually about 20 feet above the ground. It's full of water, obviously, in that photo, that photo, right? And this is just another picture looking out towards the river. And this next slide is a diagram that was put together by our very own Gary Mitchell. I won't take credit for his wonderful diagram. Uh, I don't think this is the up-to-date one, but it shows within the last five years or so how far this head cut, which is what it's called, has been going into, away from the river and into the land. So this causes a number of issues, one being that clearly it's creating this wide gully. A second one being that it's cutting into the wetland and it'll eventually start damaging the wetland. Um, and also it's just a general hazard for people. And it also creates a very serious soil pollution going into, sediment pollution going into the river. Uh, these next few slides just kind of show, there's one of the bridges. Um, so what are our steps helping to address the issue? Uh, we need to work with our partnering agencies, Metro and Clean Water Services would be the, the most pertinent ones that we can partner with. Um, I did fly and we successfully were awarded the Nature and Neighborhoods grant to address, to partially address this issue, also to improve the trail and install a couple of bridges, actual bridges with handrails and stuff cropping those streams. And so we got 200, or we had, it was, the whole grant total was around $600,000. $400,000 will be coming from Metro and the city will have to match $200,000 of that over the course of the three-year project, which I'm still waiting to hear back from the grant manager. Um, but our city engineer has allocated the funds for erosion control and like I said, we'll be putting in some bridges. Ultimately, what I would like to see is, um, Ronnie, next slide. Yes, ultimately, what I would like to see is stopping the erosion, um, removing some invasives from the forest itself, kind of restoring, because right now it's just, everyone just goes in there and runs wild. So the vegetation is kind of sparse. Um, so restoring the vegetation and actively incorporating the park, the forest into the park itself with having like an informational kiosk and maps and, you know, we could have school field trips and stuff. And it could be a cool place for the city to, you know, to have. I mean, most people that I talk to don't even realize that King City has like a forest area. So, um, anyway, so there's my presentation. I will keep the council apprised as we move forward and I'll have some more updates for that grant hopefully soon once I start getting stuff from Metro. I might need authorization to sign IDAs.
I went down there. Um, I had never gone there, but I knew this was on the agenda today and I was curious. Um, I was really impressed. I saw your sign.
Well, two of my signs got stolen.
I saw one.
There were four originally.
And I saw the orange netting, like telling people, don't go here. Of course, I went there. Um, but what I wanted to ask you is two things. One, do you think it's something that we could ask volunteers to also come and help? Because I know I would love to come volunteer and help.
Yeah, yeah.
There are legal issues that are, that volunteers may not be covered by.
Insurance. Yeah.
Uh, and that has actually come up in the Court of Appeals, I mean, when against the city, uh, I don't know, a decade ago.
So I'd probably have waivers. We could probably have waivers, assumption of risk waivers.
Yeah, so those work.
There's always, there's always a way around legally. Um, but thank you, but, um.
A lot of work for one person. I had to carry all those people.
Yeah.
And there still needs to be more, uh, more fencing. And right now in our garage, since Dave is out, as the chief mentioned, I've been using his drill and I'm actually drilling holes in the next sign. They were too thick. And so I've got this like big giant leave machine thing. I don't know what it's called. And I'm, I'm doing public work stuff and I'm going to actually build an actual, uh, sign and like go pile drive into the ground and anyway. I don't do anything.
Do you need us to make a motion or anything to?
No, this is just informational.
Oh, okay, all right.
Don't take up any more time.
Thank you.
Anyone else have any questions? Yeah.
I took some, I took some pictures.
Onto new business. The first item is amending the BEH contract. I just put this on here because I have found it a little bit difficult, I think, since the contract we agreed to last month. Um, additional items have come up that, and we are only meeting once a month, and this one got pushed off a week. I would just like to go back and like talk about, can we widen the scope a little bit? I know there was a lot of issues against adding personnel issues. Um, there have been additional personnel issues that it would be nice to just have Ashley with BEH take care of without us first voting on it, additional grievances and, you know. So I, I want to go back to readdressing, can we add in the personnel issues not pertaining to union contract negotiations? Just to kind of loosen the handcuffs a little bit on what Ash, what services Ashley can provide for us.
I think it's a good idea to add, I mean, Ashley's expertise is definitely personnel. She also mentioned she knows a little bit about the union contracts and.
But it would not, it would be not.
It's not the union. I know, but I'm just.
That was the biggest issue last month.
But she has, but she has personnel issues and she can help us with.
Yeah, yeah. Come up.
I agree.
Short of having like an emergency session or special session, say, hey, can we have her deal with this? Just let her deal with the personnel issues that come in. So that was, that was my suggestion and reason for adding it. So I welcome discussion, feedback, on how we can do that.
Is that all you want to add?
That would be my suggestion is just to add back in personnel issues not related to the union contract that we initially had in last month.
I will make a motion.
Regarding the union contract?
Not related to the union.
Not related.
Because that was the biggest issue with the personnel thing. It seemed like was we needed to separate the two. So personnel issues, but not related to the union contract. And it sounds like we have another firm in here that we're going to be in, Ashley herself, so she doesn't have the capacity to do that in a meeting, so.
So I make a motion to add to the contract that the city council has already approved and add the word personnel services to a contract for Ashley Justgrill.
Not related.
Oh, not related to any union business.
I'll second that.
Um, the question that I have, Ashley, free maybe, would this cover you being allowed to stay at our meeting? So we don't have to vote for you to stay each time or can we delegate, like I could ask you to stay as part of that?
It's up to the council. So I think the original language that we put in the scope was other matters as assigned and that would be as assigned by council, voted on by city.
So I just want, right now, we're just in this transitional period where we're like piecing together legal counsel. Um, so with the, like approval of counsel, I would like to also add in probably that, um, like the mayor can invite Ashley to stay at a meeting with.
So another way to do it is to, the council can delegate authority to an individual to expand the scope of the representation. Um, that person can, you know, either be a member of the body. A lot of times it is, you know, whoever is acting in the role of the city manager. Um, so those are just alternatives. So we can actually expand to include personnel matters. You can expand to include personnel matters and other matters as assigned by council. Or you can say, you can delegate authority to an individual to work with our firm.
So can we designate you, Mayor, to have that authority as needed?
Yeah.
It needs to be on the council.
I, I just would like to not have to take a vote at the start of each meeting to say, do we want Ashley to stay? Like if we need legal counsel here, then it would be nice to just invite her to, or to come without, without the vote. Because, you know, she does live further away. So if we have to vote at the start of the meeting to say, can you come to the meeting? Then she's not going to be able to attend live. It would always be via Zoom and there's just nothing nice about.
That's Portland. That was my office today.
Well, yeah, so.
Well, I can amend my motion to add that we delegate the power to the mayor um, to invite Ashley to our meetings and to, um, if there's an urgent matter, Mayor, you could address it and then bring it back to the city council for ratification.
I'm going to make a suggestion. So if we're going to do personnel matters and then other matters as assigned by the mayor, makes sense.
Yeah, that sounds good.
I guess that has a very clear motion.
Yeah, I think so.
Recall your motion, withdraw it.
You guys make it so hard for me.
But I would recommend just making it very clear.
Okay. Okay, so my motion is to add personnel services, not including union business, to the BEH contract and.
Other matters as assigned.
As assigned by the mayor. Other matters as assigned by the mayor.
I'll second that.
All right.
Want me to read it again?
No, no, you're good. I got it.
Did we lose Vince?
Did we lose, did we lose Vince?
He probably trumped up. He probably did.
Okay, so is there further discussion? Questions, concerns? Let's go ahead and do roll call votes. Um, Councilor Gearhart?
Yes.
Councilor Braverman?
Yes.
Councilor Tysoe?
Yes.
Councilor Hartman?
Yes.
And Mayor Kazmersky? Yes. Okay. Ed, I think you had already started working on that contract. Can you include that language?
I was just texting Ronnie that I will send it to him tomorrow in Word version so he can make the adjustment. He has the official language.
Appreciate it. Thank you, thank you very much. Okay, next item, July financial memo. Who's making that? I, I think it's just a memo. We're not approving anything, right?
I don't know if we have any financials. Ronnie can answer that.
Can you hear me now?
Yeah, hi Katie, welcome. Thank you.
Hi, yeah. Um, the financial memo was really just to say that because it is year end, there are some special rules in accounting that allow us to recognize revenue in the current fiscal year, meaning the fiscal year ending June 30th, up to 60 days post the end of the year. So we just need 60 days to get all that, those funds to trickle in and then we will present the financials once they're actually complete and closer to what we would see under an audit. So that's really all the financial memo is saying.
Okay, thank you so much, Katie.
You got it.
Next. Next on the agenda, we have our minor code amendment public hearing. Is it good for me to start? Ladies and gentlemen, we have scheduled one legislative land use hearing related to ordinance number 0-2025-02. Minor, oh, I think that's O, O-2025-02, minor amendment to the Community Development Code Section 16 dot 114. I should say point 060, uh, point 6, point 6, point 8. The hearing format for this procedure is different than quasi-judicial land use proceedings. Though members of the public provide testimony in the same manner. Members of the public may participate in person, in writing, or both. We ask that a copy of all written materials be submitted to our city clerk so that they can be made part of the record of the proceeding. The grounds for appeal of a legislative decision are contained in ORS Chapter 197, specifically ORS 197 point 620. If you wish to speak for, against, or comment in any way, if you have, um, number one, if you have materials, the city recorder needs a copy of them. Number two, for in-person testimonials, please write your name and all other required fields on the form in the back of the chambers. Number three, for testimonials via Zoom, please write your name and indicate whether you are in support, in opposition, or neutral in the comments section. Names will be assigned a number in the order in which we receive comments in the chat box. When I call your number, please identify yourself and make your statement. The maximum time allotted for a testimony shall be three minutes for individuals, 15 minutes for applicants and persons representing four or more persons, 10 minutes for applicants for rebuttal. If your testimony would be repetitious, but you would like the opportunity to appeal the decision, you must find the hearing sign-in sheet located at the rear of council chambers or type your name in the chat box or let staff know and they will type your name in the chat box. Only those who have appeared before the council in person, Zoom, or in writing will be allowed to speak on appeal of this item to the Land Use Board of Appeals. Please be advised that all participants in person or via Zoom are expected to conduct themselves respectfully and professionally. Interruptions of public meetings containing inappropriate comments, hate speech, sexually explicit content, foul language, or any language suggesting bodily harm to others will not be tolerated. If any participant engages in such conduct, the mayor reserves the right to immediately mute and remove the offending individual from the meeting. This action aligns with our commitment to maintaining a safe and respectful environment for all participants. By joining this meeting, you acknowledge and agree to adhere to guidelines. Public hearing, I call to order the public hearing regarding ordinance number O-2025-02, minor amendment to the Community Development Code Section 16 point 114, point 060, point C, point 6, point 8, at 7:35 PM. A lot of words. All right, Mr. Carter, please review ordinance by title.
All right, first reading of ordinance O-2025-02, minor amendment to the Community Development Code, Section 16, 114, 060, C, 6, A.
All right, does any member of the council have any ex parte contact they wish to disclose? Okay, seeing and hearing none, does any member of the audience wish to challenge the jurisdiction of the council to hear this matter? Hearing none, does any member of the council want to disclose any actual or potential conflicts of interest? Hearing none, does any member of the audience wish to challenge any individual member of the council? Okay, hearing none. For all those wishing to testify, please be aware that if you fail to raise an issue in person, Zoom, or by letter today or to the council, you will be unable to raise that issue at a subsequent time on appeal to the Land Use Board of Appeals. Testimony and evidence must be directed toward the criteria that staff will describe or other criteria in the plan or land use code which you believe apply to the decision. Failure to specifically address the approval criteria that staff will describe also precludes the raising of an issue related to those criteria on appeal. At this time, I call for the staff to present a proposal along with applicable approval standards and make a recommendation.
Hey, Mayor, so we were presented an application from Pacific Community Design in relation to a minor code amendment for the section that we mentioned, which is a section that deals with design standards for new homes in Kingston Terrace. Uh, the specific part they were asking to be amended is the Section 6 of Design Standards, which is transitional space, which basically requires that all homes in Kingston Terrace have one of two things on their front entrance way, either a vertical transition that rises at least three feet from grade or a horizontal transition which goes at least six feet deep. Uh, the requested amendment would reduce the vertical transition from three feet to 18 inches. And they're requesting this because as new home is going out and doing surveying over in Kingston Terrace Town Center, they're realizing there are some topographic constraints and it just makes more sense to have a lower regulation. And so literally the only code that is being amended is two words in the code, three feet to 18 inches. This is a legislative decision by the city council, so there's not really, it's not quasi-judicial as like the annexation was. So it's, it's not, the only really, um, approval criteria is the comprehensive plans and the comprehensive plan doesn't restrict height of entrance ways.
And the notice that you read, uh, that if people want to appeal if they go to Luba would be inapplicable to this. Uh, there's virtually no appeal from a legislative action except to circuit court through a different sort of proceeding that never gets noticed as legislative.
Anyone have any questions, Ronnie?
I don't understand like why, what, what are we talking about stairs here or a ramp or?
And the applicant has prepared a presentation to further illustrate.
Okay.
But basically, uh, Councilor Braverman, when you go up into a step.
Yeah.
Like Edgewater, for example.
Right. Right.
So what this requires is that those steps must be at least three feet high. So like three steps or six steps.
The steps are lower.
For making them lower.
Which could sometimes easier-
Easier for people to get in.
But they're not so, there are some steps in Edgewater that are so narrow that it's hard, it's hard to walk up them.
They just have to be at least 18 inches in total. Don't regulate the size of the step. I think the building code does. Yeah.
Okay, so it's just the height.
The general, the overall height.
At this time, I call for the applicant to present their proposal, and I will get my timer out.
Hello.
Start our 15 minute timer here. Go ahead.
Okay, I do have a presentation, Ronnie, if you wanna pull it up.
I will pause while I do that. That's okay.
Thank you.
Got them right.
Thank you. So, good evening, Mayor and councilors, my name is Maureen Jackson, and I'm an Associate Project Manager with PCD. For the record, my address is 12564 Southwest Main Street in Tiger. Tonight, I'm here representing the New Home Company to request amendment to the city's Community Development Code, and we hope that this presentation clears up some questions that you have. So, we are requesting an amendment to the Kingston Terrace District Code Transitional Space Design Standard. Development in the district does require a minimum level of architectural design, and while the design standards promote attention to detail, human scale design, street visibility, and privacy of adjacent properties, they're also intended to allow flexibility in a variety of architectural styles. So, an element of the design standards is the traditional space, or sorry, transitional space, which as Max explains, it's identified as an area of transition between the public right-of-way, which is usually the public sidewalk, and the homeowner's front door. And the Transitional Space Design Standard may be either the vertical or horizontal. In compliance with the horizontal transition, it does require the six-foot deep porch, and that homes that do not have a deep porch are required to meet the vertical transition standard. So, our request is specific to the vertical transition. Again, the standard currently requires an uncovered flight of stairs that rises at least three feet, and we're requesting to amend the code to allow a rise of 18 inches. So, we do feel that the request supports development of homes that reflect the goals of the 2018 concept plan and the Kingston Terrace Master Plan. The vision and the goals of both plans include development of housing that appeals to a full spectrum of people, taking into account the diverse incomes, ages, and needs. So, we also feel the amendment supports universal design principles, which is a core tenet of the concept plan. A reduction in the height of the stairs required up to the front porch allows greater accessibility and visibility. And if you could go forward. And forward again. Sorry, I think we're on slide five. Right here, okay, great, thanks. So, to better illustrate this, we have a couple of pictures from the Edgewater neighborhood here in King City. So, on the left is an image of homes designed with steps that provide an 18-inch vertical transition from the sidewalk to the porch, where the home on the right is designed with a flight of stairs that meets the current three-foot code requirement. So, you can see from both frontages, they provide a clear transition between the public street and the sidewalk to the front door. However, the homes on the left with an 18-inch rise, they offer easier access for homeowners and guests with the fewer steps and the gentler rise. So, the shorter rise also allows homeowners the option to create an ADA compliant entrance. So, we're asking that the city amend the Transitional Space Design Standards to provide the developers the opportunity to offer homebuyers broader choice in the entrance in the frontage designs. And the next, we also feel the requested amendment to the Vertical Transition Design Standards better supports context-sensitive design. So, to illustrate this point, we have two pictures here of homes along Southwest Macbeth Drive. The home pictured to the left is located on the north side of the street, and then the picture on the right are homes located directly across the street on the south side. So, the topography, the topography of the property, which is now the Edgewater neighborhood, it required grading that resulted in the walls and the steep stairs that you see today. And the requested code amendment will better account for existing topography that doesn't lend itself to a three-foot rise, specifically the western portions of the Kingston Terrace District, which is relatively flat. Requiring the three-foot vertical transition would artificially force topographic changes, changes in the grade that would also impact walkability and bikeability of the neighborhood. And we do strive to build with the natural environment, we don't want to have to manipulate the existing grade to create an artificial street scape. And the next slide. So, the requested text amendment will also support development of neighborhoods in the Kingston Terrace District that contain a variety of architectural designs. This amendment will permit a mix of housing styles along the street similar to what you see in Edgewater. The amendment will support construction of craftsman-style homes that meet the horizontal transition standard with the wide porches, next to more contemporary-style homes with the smaller porches that require compliance with the Vertical Transition Standard. This variety of architectural, architectural styles creates a neighborhood that's not only easily accessible, but provides greater interest for pedestrians. New Home Company is requesting the text amendment in order to build a neighborhood in Kingston Terrace District with the same emphasis on neighborhood character and pedestrian access. So, these last two images, the next slide, Ronnie, they illustrate how transition space with a three-foot rise impacts driveways and entrances into the garages. Here, you can see a three-foot rise results in a driveway slope greater than 14%, and for easy accessibility, driveway slopes should really be no more than eight to 10%. And then, in this rendering, you can see how a three-foot rise impacts rear-loaded homes. The homes designed to meet the current code result in an access to a garage from an alley with a slope of almost 30%. And again, driveways and access into rear garages should be no more than eight to 10%. So, amending the Transitional Space Design Standard to 18 inches will result in driveways and rear access to alley-loaded garages that are easier to maneuver and more accessible. So, I hope that answers a lot of questions. And if you have any further questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Can I ask a question? I'm not opposed to, I want to make that clear, but I just want to say, I live in Edgewater, so I'll disclose that. In fact, I think you have a picture of most of my house on Macbeth. But anyway, I noticed that in, during the rainy season, which is like nine or 10 months out of our year, those horizontal steps that are all the same color are really hard to, they're easy to miss when you're walking towards someone's house, I know because I've missed them. So, I don't know if there's any way possible, and maybe it's too late to add that, but it'd be nice if you guys could put something that differentiates the color so people don't fall. Because believe it or not, the really tall steps that I have in my house, even though they are difficult to, at least you can see them, and there's a railing, you can, I can hold on when I'm going up-
Right.
...but those horizontal steps that you showed, there's no railing, and they blend in so well, it looks like, it looks like it's all one layer, especially for more senior people like me that even with my glasses didn't see the steps and have tripped and fallen.
There is nothing currently in the code that requires that design-
Right.
...feature in the stairway. That would be something you could explore in the code amendments coming up.
Wouldn't that be also something that landscapers could do? Put a hedge on each side of them so that if you fall, you can fall into the-
You can't, you can't, you can't really see it, and also, a lot of the HOAs don't allow you to paint white lines on, on them, so I just wanted to make, I just wanted you to know that- We, we are primarily, I mean, Edgewater is the only exception, really, because, but there are a lot of seniors like myself that live in Edgewater, and I just wanted to point out that during the rain, during the rain, it's really hard to differentiate those, those horizontal steps, and it, and there's no handrail, so it is easy for people to fall.
I would definitely bring that forward to New Home.
Okay, how do I do this?
Or I can, yes, our client, yes.
And like I said, I'm not, I, I think it looks beautiful, and I, I see the benefit of it, but it, it, I have, and I have seen other people fall too.
Okay. All right, does any member of the audience wish to speak in favor of the application?
Thank you.
Anybody on the line still? In favor? No. Okay. Hearing none. Does any member of the audience wish to speak in opposition to this application? None. Hearing none. Does anyone wish to provide a neutral comment? Hearing none. Does the applicant have any rebuttal, or any comments? Do you, do councilors have any additional questions with staff? Okay, hearing none. At this time, I would ask for a motion to close public testimony.
Motion to close public testimony.
Second. Okay, all in favor, please raise your hand. Do we have to do a roll call for this?
Actually, yes, it's an ordinance, sorry.
No, no, there's just a motion to close the public hearing. I still, it's an ordinance, so I still don't get a roll.
Councilor Dearheart?
Yes.
Councilor Braverman?
Yes.
Councilor Tyco?
Yes.
Councilor Hartman?
Yes.
And Mayor Katmerzky? Yes. Me, yes. I declare the public testimony for ordinance number O-2025-02, minor amendment to the Community Development Code Section 16 point 114, point 060, point A, closed at 7:51 PM on, oops, on July 24, 2025. Thanks. I now ask for a motion to continue the public hearing to August 20th-
21st.
August 21st, 2025, at 6:00 PM, when the City Council will deliberate, conduct the second reading of the ordinance by title, and take a vote.
I make such motion.
Second.
Okay. Second by Councilor Tyco. And Councilor Hartman. Councilor Tyco. Councilor, Council President Braverman?
Yes.
Councilor Dearheart?
Yes.
And Mayor Katmerzky? Yes.
Can I just ask a question?
I declare that the public hearing for ordinance number O-2025-02, a minor amendment to Community Development Code Section 16 point 114, point 060, point 6, C, point 6, point A, will continue on August 21, 2025, at 6:00 PM. Okay. All right. And moving along, we have a pride rate increase proposal. Do we need to do any formal-
I make a motion that we just move the pride rate increase to our agenda on August 21st at 6:00 PM.
Second. All in favor, raise your hand.
All of us.
Next on our agenda is R-2025-16, bricks construction.
I will.
Thank you.
All right, so we have a resolution for the bricks construction contract for 2025 street improvements. Would you guys like to hear kind of what those improvements are scoped out to be and what the process has been up to this point? So, we work closely with Conso Engineering, that's our consulting engineering firm. And essentially, back when we start, you know, basically, the street improvements are identified on a series, a scale of how bad they are, basically. And we do our best with our limited resources and our limited staff to identify the worst streets and the streets that need the most improvement. When we had our initial meeting internally, back in the spring, there was a list of about five or six streets that included striping and some other improvements, and that list had to be reduced to three streets, which ended up being Crown Drive, a portion of Crown Drive, a portion of King Richard, and a portion of Southwest Riviera. And the reason why it had to be reduced was because of the stormwater issue that you already heard about from Mr. DeWitt over at the top of Crown Drive on the far north end over there. And that is very expensive to retrofit stormwater. It involves, you know, digging further down, doing trenching, involving pipes, I'm sure Councilor Hartman can speak all about that. And so, with the expenses, we had to reduce those streets. On July 9, we set out our RFP bid, so we had four bidders come in, and it was me and the city engineer. Basically, that process just goes, they tell you their price for the work, you pick the lowest bid generally. Keep in mind that even though it's the lowest bid, all work that's performed needs to be inspected and approved by the city engineer before it's ultimately accepted. And so, we ended up going with bricks construction, they had the lowest bid. Bricks, well, it's generally a little bit less expensive because they do their own paving as opposed to subcontracting their paving out. And we are here today to award them that contract, as I'm sure the councilors are aware, there have been some communications with folks over in the Crown Drive, or the condominium neighborhood, specifically about the Arbevida.
Yes.
I am happy to inform the council that we have retained an arborist who will be overseeing the construction to ensure that the Arbevidas are protected to the maximum extent possible. He will be coming out, or they will be coming out tomorrow to do their initial inspection. The options, you know, even if, if we have to go so far as to not pave, you know, give a buffer even, I mean, that would ultimately, I think, be cheaper on the city. And we also reconfigured the stormwater, so the plans, I believe, are online, and they're also available at City Hall, but it's actually interesting that I got this map because it actually aligns perfectly with the stormwater retrofit that we are being put in that was designed by the city engineer. And it goes along the south and north side at that corner, and then right when it gets to the very corner where the Arbevida hedge is there, it cuts across and then goes on the west side of Crown Drive down. So, the, I think the primary concern is that if we were to trench along the Arbevida hedge, that would damage the roofs more so than just repaving the street, and we're avoiding doing that.
So, you're going on the other side of the road.
Right at the start of the Arbevida. And that is, that is shown in the completed design process. So, with that being said, the total cost for the contract is $290,430, and it is, the Conso estimates for the project is $335,087, so we're still about, I don't know, $45,000 under budget. But we'll, I mean, we'll have to, we have to retain the arborist, so that can add a little bit of cost.
Jessica and I did have ex parte contact-
We went down there-
Jenny Walker.
We went down to meet with Jenny Walker, but more importantly, yeah, but more importantly, I walked around, you know, to see where the Arbevidas were and to figure out like why that was so important, because at first I thought that the road quality would take precedence over the Arbevidas, but, and I'm not even saying that right, but I can see why now when I looked beyond there, there is, if, if the Arbevidas are not there, then there's no buffer in the section of Highway 99, and it is noisy and dusty. So, I did see why that was so important to them and that how long it took for them to grow up tall enough to give them that buffer. But the question I have for you, Max, is that Ms. Walker had a specialist of her own that seemed very reasonable, who had an idea of how he could pin them back somehow so they wouldn't get, like a cheese-
I would.
And a cheesecloth so they wouldn't dry out. Have you been able to talk to her? And a cheesecloth so they wouldn't dry out. Have you been able to talk to her, just, just to compare your arboritas expert with hers?
Well, so we, we just got the arborist, uh, today. And I also went and spoke with, um, Ms. Walker as well as the city engineer, and I agreed with her because I do believe that those, that hedge is important for
Yes.
sake of the neighborhood. I want to want to look at a highway and, you know, there's a bus stop there and I get it, you know?
Okay.
So, um, when I talked to her, that's just back, I think, in May or something, um, I, I heard her concern, I agree with it. And yeah, I mean, there's going to be maybe some mitigation that is proposed by her, and there's definitely a possibility that we get our arborist to discuss with her arborist. But I'm, what I want to stress is that we haven't had our pre-construction meeting with the contractor. So they might be aware, they might not be aware that this is an issue, but this is an issue that will be discussed in the pre-construction meeting.
That's one of the bid documents there about protection of those streets.
I am not aware of, I, I'm not sure what the-
They very well might be in there. The bricks will already own that.
It's on the, uh-
Can we make, can we destroy that?
It's starting to get out.
It is, it is called out in the design. So, you know, this has been something that, at least the city engineer has been aware of, so that might be-
They're in the documents and they hardbid the job through the process and they own the work.
Well, if you could reassure not only her, but her neighbors next to her also were concerned. Um, so we can take care of that. The second concern that I saw myself was, as you know, since you went out there, is that there's only one way for all of those, um, residents to come in another house and it's facing where you're going to be during the, where bricks is going to be during the construction. What happens if they have an emergency? How are they, how are they going to get in? I mean, I know that you're going to provide some way, but these are people that have like permanent heart conditions where seconds could be life or death for them. Does that make sense? Like, it's more urgent than let's say me, you know, falling down like I do all the time.
I believe they're legally obligated to require emergency access.
That will be covered in this pre-construction meeting that Max will have.
I didn't see any room.
Contractors are obligated in our CCB license to give way to any emergency vehicle or anything. We have to do, we have to drop all work and make sure that they are able to access.
Okay.
What we can be called liable.
Can you reassure, so I didn't know that, but if you could reassure her that she, I mean, I can understand why she's worried.
I just have a, um, financial question. Because this water is running off of Beach Bend, and Beach Bend belongs to Washington County, and is there any help from Washington County or Clean Water Services? They don't take any-
All the work is entirely done within King City.
Well, not as a fun problem.
Yeah.
A potato.
If flooding was the issue of the area that it was caused in, then we would be getting a lot of money from Tiger. But it's not.
Is that a comment? It's been a long time since I've seen a hard bid actually beat an engineer's budget, so that's impressive.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Well, I, I, I just would, you know, I mean, because I go where I go every day, and it's like, wait a minute, we don't own that road, and that road, that, that road is what is causing-
Well, and then we dump it off over into Highway ninety nine and then it's all a problem.
It's literally a hot potato.
Um, so what about that section that kind of, in my mind, where the arborita come to an end and the other, there's, there was a big hole there that I saw.
Yeah, that is the exact area that is going to be where the retrofit takes place, and that's where it's going to cross the street and go to the other side. And that hole is, for all intents and purposes, completely inoperable.
Okay, and how long do they estimate this will take from start to finish? So-
We'll have to figure that out, hash it all out in the pre-construction meeting.
Is there a way to-
As soon as I know the exact date, that will be released to the public.
Okay.
And all the folks that'll be affected, including, you know, on Riviera and, and King Richard, will have notices.
And when does that meeting come?
Only two weeks from now.
I'm not sure exactly when the meeting is. I think it's next week.
I don't know the discover work, but it's, it's not, the excavation and the pipe work will take the longest. The rest of it's actually quite quick.
I, I think the, the, the whole paving last year was like three days or something.
Can we make it a condition that they expedite it or something, or?
If the work takes-
I am.
You know how they could, they could stretch it out for six years like they do on Highway two-
They won't.
Highway two seventeen.
That would be financially unviable for them. They would end up paying us to do the job.
Well, and yeah, it, it takes as long as it takes them to do, and if you want it done quicker, you probably have to pay them overtime and, you know, then it's been the biggest of that.
But we don't want them to be able to spread it out for years.
So in public bidding, in public bidding, the way contractors work is to get it done as fast as possible. So they are financially motivated by putting in a low bid to do it as quickly as they can. So believe me, we won't be able to push them any further. They will want to go. That's how they make money.
And partly when you're disturbing dirt. Yeah.
You have to allow dirt
Settle.
To settle. And so if you try to do it too fast-
Sure.
It's going to create a bigger problem.
Max, in the bid document, is there anything about liquidated damages on a must be finished by date?
According to Ronnie.
Will you check? Because that's a really good point. Thank you, councillor. Are you going to let, I'm sorry, Mayor, um, Max, will you let, um, Ms. Walker know of the things and she doesn't worry anymore about it, or do you want me to write to her?
If you could write to her, that would be great.
Okay. I want to make sure I didn't overstep.
Thank you, Max. I mean, I know that there's been a lot of issues that have kind of come up from this and you've handled them great, in my opinion. So, um, yeah, thanks. And Ronnie, yes, thank you for all the, all the questions that you've been able to answer, all the concerns you've heard, and then doing what you can to help me to get that. So I appreciate that. All right, any other questions?
Do you need approval from us?
Yes, the resolution, uh, resolution of the city council of the city of King City, Oregon, acting as the local contract review board, awarding a contract to Brick Saving Northwest for twenty twenty five street improvements and authorizing the mayor and city manager for, doesn't mean, or chief, uh, city man, acting city manager, to execute the agreement.
I make a motion to approve, um, our twenty twenty five dash sixteen bricks construction resolution?
Second.
All right, um, Councillor Hartman?
Yes.
Councillor Tyco?
Yes.
Councillor Braverman?
Yes.
Councillor Dearhart?
Yes.
Mayor Kowalski, yes. Motion passes five zero. Thank you. Okay, um, and next we have the Harris Elkins agreement. Anybody like to discuss what this agreement is about?
Um, so this is the agreement that was signed by Mr. Westman, uh, for an appeal of the writ for, uh, West positions. Do you know anything more about Tiger?
Um, well, I have a lot of things to say about this, but I first want to say that I have really grown to appreciate Councillor Hartman. I think he brings a lot of knowledge, um, here to our bench and answers a lot of questions that we want to know. Having said that, um, I'm really disappointed that the prior city manager went ahead and fought the writ without any city council approval and allowed, uh, Mr. Harris and his firm to go ahead and fight the writ, challenge two judges, and spend attorney fees on that, uh, without any city council approval. Um, the city manager mentioned that it was, in his mind, discussed in executive session, but as we all know, executive session, there can be no decision, and there was not one. So I find that very dismaying. Um, I would like to make a suggestion, and I don't know if it's out of order or not, but my suggestion would be this, and it's been my suggestion from the day I was sworn in here. I would like to see us agree to restart those thirty five days, and I'd like Mr. Hartman to apply and be appointed back onto the city council. I would like to have him on the city council, but I think it would be proper and it would be a good show of goodwill if we could do it properly and with city council approval and avoid any more writs, appeals, attorney fees, ranker, division. Um, and I hope that Mr. Hartman understands that it never was anything personal with him. It was just if we're, if, if one person is going to be held to the process, all of us should be held to the proper process. It shouldn't be that some people get to follow the rules and other people don't. And that, as an attorney, that's really important to me.
So I guess that's a question for one of you two. Is there something that allows for that to happen, or?
So for, for uptake for you two, we did have a writ filed on Mr. Hartman. In that court case, the, the city did win. Um, I don't know all the details, let us remember it.
The technicality.
I can make a video for everybody. I'm on, I'm tired of this shit. I'm all over. You can have my seat. I will not be coming again, but I appreciate your comments, but I'm done.
We really were hoping that we would have you come back.
Right, um-
So either way, we still have, um, a court appeal case going, um, so.
I, well, given what just happened, I would like to say that, um, I would like to spend no more legal fees on this. Um, it was already decided, and if, um, it's being appealed, then, you know, I don't, I don't think we should spend our city resources on defending that.
I agree.
Yes.
Um, I, like I said, maybe, um, we'll have another vacancy. I personally would like to see, uh, Councillor Hartman reapply. I think it would make him feel better to be appointed properly. Um, and, uh, so I just want to open that up for, uh, his consideration.
Do we, is that like a formal resignation, like what, where we?
Yeah, we have to accept it.
Well, he didn't, I don't know.
I think what happened was, is there was no resignation. Ten Beers, he simply said, I've had it undone, walked out. That may be for this evening. That, that may be for this evening, or it may be that he intended to-
We need to get, yeah, we need to get clarification on that, but, um, I still, I don't want to spend any more city resources on this.
So Ronnie, are you going to contact John?
Why not? You do want to text him?
I mean, not right now.
Okay. I don't know.
No, no, I, if, if you wouldn't mind reaching out to him tomorrow. Or, or to, if you wouldn't mind reaching out to him tomorrow, and we can get clarification on, on what's going on. I'm not familiar with this issue.
It's, it's difficult to say because I haven't witnessed a pleading. If there are things like attorney fees at issue, then, then the case would not be mooted. Otherwise, it's possible that the case is mooted and, and a, a city motion would be necessary or some other method of informing the court that it might be moved, if it is. So, so you might have to spend, have some time.
Let me have some paperwork.
Well, um, I, I, I don't think you can simply skin, skin, I don't think I could simply skin the pleadings right now and say exactly what it says.
Yeah.
So, um-
I, I mean, yeah, I would just like to not spend more resources fighting the appeal.
Yeah, I'd make-
No, I understand that there are, there are, um, they have already begun working on this, so there are, there will be something that we need to pay for services rendered, but-
Just for, just for clarification, they have started it, so whatever we do tonight, whether we agree with it or not, we still have to pay Mr. Harris.
And that what, that is, um, that is appropriate because Mr. Westman did go into this contract under our resolution where it says it has to be ratified by the council within forty five days. So it was entered into on June twenty sixth, so there were service, there was work done between now, then, and when we can ratify it. Um, so there will be a, there will be a bill that we will need to pay in, in relation to this, but I, I would like to not continue spending.
I, I agree. I, I would, um, make a motion to halt any further. I think somebody should let the Harris firm know that they need to halt any further service until further notice, number one. Number two, again, I just want to say for the record that it was inappropriate for the Harris firm to be retained, paid for initially without city council approval. Um, they challenged two judges for bias, saying that the client had a bi, that the judges were biased and that the client wanted the two judges challenged for bias, which was embarrassing to me because I appeared before both of those judges and I had not been asked if I had a bias, and I was asked by one of them if I had a bias. Um, so I really have to say that going forward, I would really hope the city council and staff would not allow that to happen again. We are the client. We were never consulted and we never were asked to consent to any of that. And I find that to be reprehensible for somebody who's brought a claim, claiming that, um, somebody has done something wrong when that person clearly did something pretty egregious.
I'm going to go ahead and make a motion now. I, I would like to move that we, um, do not approve this retainer agreement.
Second it.
Councillor Dearhart?
Yes.
Councillor Braverman?
Yes.
Tyco. I would like to not continue them, right now as it is. They can continue working on it and we continue paying money. I want it, if we want to enter into another agreement, we can do that, but I want this agreement, that was my motion, is to have this agreement.
I'm still going to abstain. And you're still going to get the contract.
We don't want-
I, I think, you're, you would, if I abstain, your three positive votes-
No, I understand, but I think an extension should have, like, I think you're saying no.
You say no?
I did say no. I said, I feel that this decision should be postponed until we get further clarification.
Okay. All right, and then Mayor Kowalski, I vote yes.
So your motion?
Motion passes three one. Okay, um, the next, or the last item is the Collier agreement. For this, I'm going to recuse myself because it does have to do with- So, Councillor President?
Yes, ma'am.
Keith, do you have any idea what the agreement is for Mr. Collier, or who, who would know that?
The, I do not. I just have the, I have copy of it. Oh, but that's it.
What is the contract? How much is it for? What's he charging? Who has that information?
So I do. Um, he is just charging for the King City Police Inter negotiations, um, that is it. Uh, his attorney fees are four hundred and eighty-five dollars per hour, so that's horrible. Yeah, that's kind of hitting in a nutshell.
Do we have a copy of this? It was attached, right?
Yes.
The packet.
Okay.
So, um, I think, I can confirm that it was the low bid on the rate, because I confirmed that on the telephone and passed that on to Mr. Westman, uh, and he chose, he said we have to take the low rate, so he did.
So the process was followed properly at that time.
And this is only for negotiation?
Yeah, only for, uh, this current negotiation, nothing in the future as far as what I'm reading.
And do we owe anybody anything for past arbitration or mediation or anything?
Uh, I mean, yes, no?
Okay.
Three's away.
The law's estate, yes.
That's the way. So I think we still owe it a state.
Keith, do we, do you feel like, so we do need to return this attorney, you feel, or we don't?
I do, yeah.
We have to, I think. Yeah.
So if for nothing else, uh, the, uh, are you appointed yet to the acting, no, yeah, the chief who's sitting, who's sitting in on this, the negotiations, will need legal advice as to process procedure as well as substance, uh, in terms of him doing some, uh, some of the mediation that's going to be done. So he does need this advice.
And that will be happening real soon.
Yes.
So can, can the chief, uh, basically direct this attorney from here on out, so we have you oversighting, making sure he's not overspending, you don't, you need him for special things, keep, keep the lid and the control over how-
Keep, keep the lid and the control over how much we need to spend on that? Or do we need to appoint somebody else to be that overseer?
I guess the first part of that.
So you're going to be acting as interim city manager? So can we entrust you to be overseeing this contract with Mr. Collier while you're also negotiating? Is that, does that seem like, is that okay?
Yes.
Are you okay with that?
Yes.
And you feel like there's no conflict of interest?
I don't personally advise, advise anything. I know of no conflict.
Okay.
But as I always say, when those ethics rules come up, the O G E C doesn't care what non-O G E C lawyers say. And so my advice is worthless.
I think it would be helpful to keep, maybe just keep the city council apprised, as I'm sure you will, at each meeting, like, what, what we're spending there, and be transparent, and then disclose that you are wearing two hats, but that the city council is entrusting you to make sure that we're not overspending with Mr. Collier, and that we're moving things expeditiously and trying to save the taxpayers as much money so we don't run afoul of getting all these charges and then nothing's been done. Does that seem reasonable to everybody here? So I'd make a motion then to approve Mr. Collier's contract with, with the proviso that the chief will be the overseer of that contract and the cost, and will disclose any conflict of interest that might arise, and give the city council a monthly update.
Okay, I second that. Want to vote?
I want to vote.
Question, is there a quorum issue? If I recuse myself, should I, instead of saying?
I think you're.
Be recused.
I think she, I think she can vote on it to make a quorum.
No.
To make a quorum? Do you have a quorum?
I'm not.
And you need the majority of the quorum?
Yes. Majority of the quorum.
Okay, majority of the quorum. All right. So, so, so Counselor Geerhart, you've seconded it?
Yes.
And I, what's your vote?
Yes.
And Counselor Trista?
Yes.
And my vote is yes. Is that sufficient?
Yes.
Okay, so motion passes. Thank you. All right, Mayor, it's all yours.
All right. You guys, it's the 4:30.
Yay!
All right. That, that comes to an end. Can we get a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Hey, all in favor? All right.
Thank you, everybody.
8:20.
You can do the thing.
I got it.
On what? 8:20.
Thank you, everyone, for coming. Yeah, it's been nice to meet you.
Bye, Brian. It's on you to make your.
And then came.
Why didn't you amend the motion? You say, I amend the motion, so it's fine. I would have supported you.
But it's just quite evidently the contract. That was later, man. It felt like it was premature.